Welcome to the Cape Coral Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is March 13, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please guard the robe.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Present.
Hoston.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Stanky.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four is business. For A, citizen's input time. Citizen's input is a maximum of 60 minutes. As said on input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name and address the council as a collective body. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Bob Lawson, and I live in the Orchid neighborhood, which is along the river near JC Park. I have three brief comments regarding the yacht club. First of all, we all know this historic building shouldn't be torn down. Through my public records request, I have a city manager's instructions to staff. Do not refer to it as historic, but it clearly is. And it wasn't severely damaged by the hurricane. That was all false information the city continues to spread. Another question, where's the money coming from to pay for the new building? And the city never held a formal public hearing on demolishing the building, which is actually required per the city's own ordinances before a demolition permit can issue. My second comment pertains to the design options for the new building that you're going to consider today. Assuming you're going to take the building down, to my recollection, following the public comments at the meetings over the last year, several of you promised us a new design that would be inspired by the historic yacht club building. Yet I look at the design options in today's master plan, and none of them do that. It seems if you must choose, option number two is supposedly inspired by the original yacht club building. But if you look at it, it really looks nothing like the original yacht club building. If you look in the handout at pages 11 through 13, there's an image of the yacht club building, and none of these new buildings look anything like it. And my third subject is about making an architectural model of the historic yacht club building. This is something the museum has been requesting from the city for months. And two days ago, I sent each of you an email, including a 41-second video about the need to make an architectural model. I'm wondering, I didn't get any responses. Did anyone look at the 41-second video that I sent out? No one saw, anyone see it? Anyway, given destruction of the building appears imminent, I'm here this morning in person to get a response, so I'm hopeful you won't ignore my public comments.
Thank you, sir.
Morning, Mayor and council members. Joe Mazurk was president. B.J., I'm consulting here this morning, representing the Red Fish Point HOA. First of all, we want to recognize the fact that the city has been working with the neighbors, with the HOA, and has done so in a way to make sure that you are quote-unquote "good neighbors" as you redevelop this project. And you have done so. You have added additional landscaping. You've had some screening from lights. You've done just about everything we've asked, and we are very appreciative of the fact that you've recognized the need to be good neighbors. We come here this morning just to say that we believe that the possibility of a multi-story parking facility would be inconsistent with the pledge to be good neighbors, thereby shading, if you will, or limiting the sunset views of the people on Lenox and Flamingo. Anything you can do to consider that as you move forward would be appreciated, and we believe would be consistent with what you've done to this point in working with the surrounding neighbors. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizen's input? See, and nun's citizen's input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizen's input? Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, I want to refer to the email that the gentleman sent us about the miniature model. I think that that is something that would be great to go into the historical room that is planned in the new yacht club. And it is something I'll talk to city management about. I don't know who would pay for it or where it would come from, but I think having a little mini model of the old yacht club building would be a great thing to put in the museum, per se, that we're going to be having within this building. Thank you.
Okay, move on to item 4B discussion. Before I do that, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to correct some misinformation that was given this morning. There was a statement made that the ballroom was not damaged due to the hurricane. Any visitor that goes down there can clearly see that the storefront is still boarded up with wood because it, all the glass was broken. There was roof damage. We did have claims. They may even have been requested by the speaker on the insurance reimbursements. All those are public documents. So, the statement that there was no damage to the building from the hurricane is not factual. In addition to the ballroom, the power room that feeds, the electrical room that feeds the ballroom, the roof was torn off, and all the electric circuit breakers that feed the ballroom were destroyed. So, I just want to make sure I clear that up. And I do want to acknowledge that I absolutely told my staff in an email not to refer to the ballroom as historic. We did extensive records requests and searches throughout all of our documentation. There was a designation of the yacht club park itself in its entirety, the site. And so, that clearly, I will say it on record, the yacht club site is, was designated by our historical board to be a historic site for the city of Cape Coral. However, the structure itself is not and was not. And so, my direction to staff was to make sure that I overcommunicated what was designated and what was not, and how to communicate into the public that nuance and that distinction. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, and I want to clarify another statement regarding that ordinance. There is no requirement that there be, because there's no designation of it being a historic structure, there means there's no requirement or a code for there to be any type of hearing. So, that statement was also not accurate under our current Code of Laws and ordinances. So, I want to make sure that everyone understands that who's watching.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. I just wanted to go on record as saying that although the building is not designated as a historic building, I would concur and support Councilmember Welsh's comment that to have a model of it, to, you know, serve in memory of the original building that was there in the area where we'll have memorabilia. And we've already talked about having a section of the new building, having an area where we can have some of the memorabilia, pictures, article, you know, some of the components in there, to have a small model of the old building. I would support that and what would be contained within that room, for sure. Thanks.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation, Mr. City Attorney, related to the building. With regard to the site designation, what does that mean exactly legally?
Sorry. In terms of compliance with the code?
Yeah, restrictions that, you know.
So, there was, so in that regard, there was an action taken by the city council regarding that demolition. So, everything that was done was in accordance with our code. So, any statement that there was not is not accurate. So, there was a presentation that was made. I think that actually occurred before I even started here, if I'm not mistaken. And there was approval for demolition to occur. And as such, that action is final by the council regarding its demolition. So, there is, in fact, compliance.
Thank you. My question really was regarding moving forward. What type of, what does that mean moving forward with the future development? I understand that the destruction piece of it is appropriate, but with regard to the site development itself, having the fact that there's a designation of some sort of historic nature, does that have any restrictions?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
It does not.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, we'll move on to item 4B discussions. We have two items on the agenda here today, and I have had a request to switch to two items so we would have the first discussion, the animal shelter, land acquisition, and financial assistance requests. Have that topic discussed first. Is council okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. All right. With that being said, we'll move on to that particular topic, which is 4B two. I'd actually added this to the committee of the whole meeting for a discussion. I know that this nonprofit organization has had some discussion with city staff and a request. And as a result of that, I thought it would be prudent to put it on the agenda to have that discussion. With that being said, I'll turn it over to the city manager to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have Assistant City Manager Connie Barron give the presentation based on the understanding that we have from the animal shelter on their request. And then, I do believe that the representatives from the animal shelter would like to follow her and speak on behalf of the project.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Connie Barron, Assistant City Manager. I wanted to bring all of you up to speed on where we are regarding the Cape Coral Animal Shelters and plans to expand their facility. They did approach staff a few months back just to get us involved and start letting us know that they did have a desire to expand the facility and what their plans were going to be. So, I want to update you on what those plans are, as well as what the ask is from the animal shelter. As Mike said, Liz and Joanne are here today from the animal shelter to answer any questions you have about the operations and what they've accomplished over the past few years since they've opened. So, going back in time just a little bit, it was in February of 2017 that council approved ordinance 8-17 that established the agreement that we have currently in place with the Cape Coral Animal Shelter Corporation. They had allowed the non-for-profit, not-for-profit corporation to build a no-kill animal shelter and adoption facility on property that's owned by the city over near Sunsplash, Lake Kennedy. That property obviously was vacant and not in use at the time. They requested 4.2 acres to build-
Excuse me a minute. Sir, if you guys want to have a conversation, if you could do it outside, please, because we can hear you, hear the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The lease that council approved in 2017, it was a 99-year lease at a dollar per year. And it delineated some very specific terms. On December 4th, that same year, council approved resolution 236-17 that put the city in a position to agree to pay any construction-related costs associated with building that first building. These are the 2017 construction-related fees that council approved in 2017. It totaled a little over $71,000. And that table there indicates where the fee payments were going to be coming from, the reimbursements, what funds were going to reimburse for those particular fees. So, the Cape Coral Animal Shelter, they have a very interesting expansion, very large expansion that they are planning. They are looking to build a two-story structure. And the reason that they are looking to expand is because of the operations and where they are today. So, one of the expanded services that they provided was in 2020 when they identified a need in the community, not just for the no-kill facility, but also for low-cost veterinary services. They were finding that residents of Cape Coral were bringing their animals there to either have them be in residence, or they were deciding to take them to be euthanized because they could not afford the cost associated with the care for the animal. So, they opened up their low-cost animal veterinary care facility. With the success that they have had over the past few years, they met with city staff again a few months ago, and then with the city manager and I about a month ago. What they are planning, as I mentioned before, is the two-story building. The building will be over 19,000 square feet with almost 17,000 on the first floor and another 3,000 on the second floor. The new building will be housing all the shelter operations. That includes kennels, cat rooms, the adoption area, offices, laundry storage, and a multipurpose room that they can use for events and training. They will be sponsoring camp activities, school trips, which is what they, I believe, already do today. And also, the current building is going to be reconfigured to expand the low-cost veterinary clinic. The current kennels will then become dog intake and quarantine only. They will be adding 48 parking spaces to the site, which will bring them to a total of 93. And again, this entire expansion is going to be on the current 4.2-acre footprint that they already have at the location. They will continue to work with first responders, as they've had in the past, whenever then needs arise. This is, I know it's very hard to read, but if you zoom in on it, you can get some idea of how they are looking to expand the facility. The current facility is on the north end of that graphic, and then the new expansion is just south of that. The Cape Coral Animal Shelter Corporation is asking the city for the same requests that they had in 2017, which is, they are asking us to pay some of their current fees, building fees associated with it. But they are also asking for an adjacent city parcel. It's just to the south of their building, which is to the east of the building. It's about three, a third of an acre, and they are asking for that particular parcel to be able to use that area for training and then also play area for animals. The current appraisal for the site, we did not do an appraisal in 2017, but we did, we were asked to give an appraisal of the property as it is today. And the 4.2-acre site itself, the original site is about 595,000, with the addition of the one-third acre to the, yes, to the east, that adds about $50,000 and brings that total parcel appraised value to 645,000. They, again, are asking us to cover the construction-related permit fee cost to build the second building. This shows the expansion area. It's the blue area, the rectangular right there to the right. That's the area that they're looking to have added to their facility footprint. The construction-related fees for the new building will be about $64,000. It's about $4,000 less than what it was in 2017. One of the bigger numbers you'll see on there is the road impact fees. The road impact fees are double, but that's because the building is pretty much double the size of what they constructed in 2017. They're already connected to utilities, so the larger cost that you saw in 2017 for the capital expansion fees do not apply here. So, if you have any questions for me, I'll be available, but I would like to just give Joanne and Liz a chance to come up and answer any questions you have, and also give you their thoughts and plans and goals.
Hello, I'm Joanne Alardo. I'm the founder and board president of the Cape Coral Animal Shelter. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I just wanted to take a quick moment and tell you a little bit about the Cape Coral Animal Shelter and how we have been helping the community and city. Cape Coral is growing very fast, faster than ever. And in order to keep up with our community, we will be expanding the Cape Coral Animal Shelter with a 19,000-square-foot building that will house the shelter, community center, playyards, and offices. Our 8,400-square-foot building that we presently use will be converted into a low-cost veterinary clinic. Presently, in our short time, I would like to tell you some of the highlights of the shelter. We have adopted and saved over 4,500 dogs and cats in our community. 68% of those are from Cape Coral. Our veterinary clinic is a low-cost clinic, helping our community with over 6,685 clients. 80% of those are Cape Coral citizens. Our clinic helps our seniors and community who are on a fixed income to be able to afford care for their pets. Our clinic has helped many in the community that were not able to afford medical care by assisting with our Have a Heart Fund. It helps and treats those with no funds. The Cape Coral Animal Shelter has been an integral part of the city in any disaster and when in need. During Hurricane Ian, our director, Liz, has made a mission to have a few hundred pet carriers available to give out for free. We paid for those carriers with donations and grants. Having these pet carriers was more important than we ever thought. They let our community evacuate in time and to be able to bring their pets with them to shelters. And some even were able to use them to save their pets by putting them in the carriers when the water started rising. We have many stories about how important this is. At this time, during the hurricane, after, and still today, we distribute free food to the community when in need. Since our inception, we have donated tens of thousands of dollars in food and care, right here in Cape Coral. The shelter has helped out our city in many ways. That kind of amazed us when we started looking at this. We have saved over 1,000 dogs and cats from taking a ride over the bridge to Lee County Animal Services. Many dogs are lost, and we have assisted in helping those get back to their owners. This helps out the city. The city usually pays a fee for this. Because of the animal shelter, the city of Cape Coral in '22 and '23 paid to Lee County Animal Services $746,141. In '23-'24, the city paid a reduced rate of $729,847. That is saving in only one year of over $16,000. Imagine what this is going to contribute over the years. A lot more tax money would be used if the Cape Coral Animal Shelter was not here. The Cape Coral Animal Shelter works with the city on summer camp programs. We have close to 700 Cape Coral children which attend these camp programs. We do not charge the city or any children for this. The shelter has an active 350 volunteers that help run our shelter. Our shelter costs close to $2 million a year to run. Employees, clinics, vets, and helping our community with medical assistance and food is in that cost. Our shelter is funded by a caring community that understands the need. Our new building will cost us about $8 million. We are not asking the city to fund our building. We are not asking for your help with, we are asking for your help with the capital expansion fees. That's it. This is a one-time ask for this, and the returns, as you can see, will be great for the city. We think we have been a good investment for the city of Cape Coral, and we want to make sure that we're able to meet the needs of the growing community. And we hope, we are hoping that our mayor and city council would agree with that and support us in this ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'll now open up for council. If you have any discussion, either for staff or for representatives of the animal shelter, Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. The percentages related to the services to the city residences is significant, and that's great information. The question I have is probably more for staff and for discussion. With regard to the extension request for the additional area on the property itself, I'm looking at the property lines now, and it looks like that's half on the Bill Austin site and then half into that future parking area that we're going to be doing. I wonder, is it beneficial both to the city and to the dog facility to go all the way back to the east property line and give it all to them now, only for the reason that I don't think there's any other need for that piece that's going to be left, or two pieces that'll be left? And I think it might be beneficial for the area for dog walking and other things that the-
Well, this will also give us an opportunity to work with the Cape Coral Police Department on their dog training. We do not have enough space for them right now to help them out.
It just makes sense to me, looking at the map and what's being requested. We're almost chopping a piece out of something that's unusable anywhere else. And I don't know, for discussion, maybe we can just, you know, talk about that today. But that's one suggestion I have with regard to the presentation. Can you also describe what you mean by no-kill with regard to the way the shelter operates?
Sure. We don't euthanize for space at all. Medical reasons, that might exist, but we do not kill a dog because it's unwanted or because we have no room for it.
Okay, thank you. Again, I just want to say thank you. I have had the opportunity to tour the facility a couple of different times. What you're doing there is extremely impressive, and to have the foresight of our needs for this type of shelter is a great thing, and I want to say thank you. Thank you. That's all I have for questions.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on behalf of the administration. So, the remaining piece behind that was left was, is intended and planned for a walkway for special pops to get to the youth center, from the youth center to get to Sunsplash, to keep them out of the parking lots and out of the main, one of the main entrances and off the road. So, it is a planned walkway for all of the city facilities to keep them out of the flow of traffic.
Thanks, Mike. I don't know, you know, again, just looking at it, I didn't know the answer to that, but I appreciate that response.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't thank your organization enough for bringing what you brought to our city, our residents, and our special pets that we have. I'm a firm supporter of the effort. I've got a brick out front, and so, thank you for all you've done up until now. Just a couple of questions I had on this. One, there was a good discussion or a good description of what is going to be on the first floor of the expanded building. I might have missed it. What's on the second story of the new building?
So, what we did was we brought the offices upstairs. We have storage up there for medical records, papers. We found that we needed a little bit of storage, but our offices will be upstairs. Downstairs is mostly going to be used for adoptions. We have very big, we really wanted to do a very community functional, functioning center. So, we have a large space developed for school classes to come in and for training facilities inside because the summer, it's just too hot.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. I've been to- I've been to a facility like yours in Naples, and it's like walking into a Marriott for animals, so...
It is.
It sounds like you're trying to accomplish the same thing, and kudos to you for being fiscally responsible and running the facility within the bounds of the collections that you make and the donors. We appreciate them contributing to the effort. In that whole arena of fiscal management, I did have a question. With 350 volunteers, which is absolutely awesome, I've just had a question on the Form 990, and I think it's in the presentation somewhere that could be brought up, which is the annual tax return, if you will, for a nonprofit. There's an area in there where it goes through some of the expenses of the organization and under other salaries and wages. It says program service expenses of $467,000 or so. So can you explain where those salaries and wages go other than those that are going to the director and the staff and the veterinarian that's there?
Well, that's exactly what it does do. A lot of those fees that you might see on that go to per diem vets that we bring in and specialists that we need. And Liz, if you -- we want to...
Sure, no, it's -- I would say most of the expenses are veterinary costs.
Yeah, the biggest expense for the shelter is hiring the doctors to run the clinics.
Okay, and that's outside of -- that's outside of the actual dedicated veterinarian.
Yes, when we... Because we have a normally one veterinary doctor that's in within the clinic, and then we hire per diem ones that come in during the day. So we might have three more come in during the week that are also working with our doctor, and they get paid daily, and that's how we pay them.
I see. Okay, thank you.
It's a big expense, but it's the expense.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I've been to the shelter multiple times. It's run professionally. It's very clean. They run a great operation. They're doing an awesome job for our community. I don't just want to thank the people that there -- that work there. I want to thank all the people that donate and volunteer their time. I'm very thankful for what they bring to our community, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
A couple of things that I had, I guess my first question will be for staff. And I only asked this question in relation to the property and the additional property that they've requested. Since I've been here since 2017, if I recall correctly, was there a PDP for this particular project, if I remember correctly?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was a PDP that was required on the initial property, and there will be a PDP amendment required on this particular expansion because of the four -- the added acreage to the property. The PDP fees and costs are incorporated in the lease agreement, and the city is required to pay those.
Do we know what that dollar amount approximately may be?
It's about $3,300.
All right, okay. All right, and the reason I asked that question, it appeared, and it's kind of hard to tell, but it appeared when you look at the site plan for the existing building and also the proposed building, and correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like the building will fit on the existing parcel and be able to meet the SEPAC requirements, but the additional piece you want, it sounds like it's more for training or...
Well, with this, it'll give us the ability to have more community functions, especially with camp and especially training and working with the police department and also with our dogs. We need runs.
Okay.
We can do it without, but it won't be as good. I mean, it -- we should have them.
And before I get into my comments, I want to first say that thank you for everything you've done up to this point. I know it's a great facility. It's a great service for our community, and as Councilmember Stiney had mentioned, I've actually contributed my own dollars and got that brick out front as well. But I do have a couple of questions. One had to do with the financial aspect. I think Councilmember Stiney touched on it a little bit. I looked at the 2021 990 form, and under line item 15, it says salaries and compensation is $661,000 and $238. When you get down further in the form, I believe under Part 7, there's a list of compensation of officers and compensations that listed. I think most of the board members and yourself, I believe, had a zero balance. There were two individuals that were listed there. One was for $84,000, the other one's $114,000, for a total of about $198. My question is, where's the other 462? Do we know where that is?
That is our best shot, and so we have 26 employees total.
Okay.
So two, three, referring to is myself, because I'm a high-paid officer, and then there's also our veterinarian.
So the other 400,000 is for the other 26?
That is the rest.
Okay.
We have penal techs that also do adoption, so they clean in the morning, and then they do -- they do adoptions in the afternoon, and then we also have our techs who assist the veterinarians, and the other veterinarians, as Joanne mentioned, earn that salary as well.
It's over 35 employees, 38 employees, something like that in total.
Okay.
That's what -- that's the fee.
All right. I just didn't see that breakdown, that's why I was asking.
We get audited, just so you know, every single year. We do a forensic audit of everything.
The other couple of comments that I had, when you look back at the original agreement that I voted on and approved, you know, there was a $71,374 for cost for the variety of items that we've waived and actually the city had to pay for. We also -- how I kind of look at it is we donated the property. I know it's a 99-year lease for one year, value of $595,000. So if you add the two together, that's about a $666,000 investment that we made because we can't utilize that property because of the 99-year lease.
And I would actually say that the community has donated probably about $5 million into making sure that the city is getting this project and it's up and running well.
Thank you. And that was the other thing I was going to also mention, that if you look at the 990 form, and I want to congratulate you on your -- on the contributions that your organizations gets throughout the year, because you can see that the community is definitely invested. Looks like in 2021 on the 990, it was about $2.2 million that the, you know, that you've gotten in contribution. So just wanted to commend you on that.
Well, we did have a very large bequest. One of our contributors passed away and has left us a large quest, and that's what you're seeing.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't happen all -- thank God it doesn't happen all the time, but...
Or you would hope that it would happen.
No, 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 no.
Not how you get the money, it's that you get the money.
We're lucky that people are including us in their worlds.
And then you look at the -- what the ask is here today, and I guess the ask is for the additional $64,000 in fees that the city will pay and also the $55,000 in the value of the property. One of the concerns that I do have, I think it's a great service you're providing to the community, but I think it's a slippery slope. I'm not saying I'm not going to support it, but one of the concerns that I had that I wanted to make sure that I expressed is, you know, we have 6,692 business tax license here in Cape Coral. Out of those, 769 of those are taxed-exempt corporations, nonprofits that are working here in the city of Cape Coral. And one of the questions that I had asked staff earlier in the week was, and I just picked one of them, mainly because I just went to that function Saturday, how much monies, monetary monies have we contributed? And I just picked the one nonprofit, Special Populations. We know that's a great organization who we support here in the city. And I asked, how much monies have we -- monetary monies have we contributed to Special Populations over the last five years? And the answer was zero. When you look at the 769 nonprofit organizations, and again, I think you guys are providing a great service here to our community, and I know that we used to have a program many years ago, I believe when Mr. Mason was here originally, where we gave monies to the nonprofit and that particular organization, or that policy was disbanded, and we no longer do that. But my fear that I have is if we open this door, that slippery slope, those other 769 nonprofit organizations could come forward and ask for the same type of contribution, just like the animal shelter. And I'm not saying that we don't do it, but I think we need to be cautious and understand that we are opening that door. And those other nonprofit organizations in our city, and we have many of them, you know, you have the Cape Carrying Center, you got the Guardian Angels, Special Populations...
How many are on properties that are owned by the city?
Special Populations is on -- in our property.
Right.
But we haven't given them any dollars, so my question is...
But you did take care of their building and...
Hold on, this isn't a two-way conversation. So my concern is, is if we go down this path, just we may get this request again from someone else, or are we willing to do, go down that path? If we are, great, but once you open the door, we may find ourselves here again in the near future with these other organizations requesting some financial help on an expansion or a project that they may be interested in and providing, you know? And that is a service to our community, just like the 600 -- or 6,692 business tax receipts that we have in the city. Every one of those businesses are providing some form or another of a service. So that's the only thing I wanted to bring up regarding that. Councilmember Kozin.
Thank you. I just want to be clear, we do fund Special Populations. It's a city program. We don't fund Guardian Angels, which is their foundation, and they have that foundation to make up for what we can't give them as a city. So I just want to be clear, it's a slippery slope. I can appreciate that argument, but we did this in 2017, and we haven't had many nonprofits coming to us with their hands open besides the Burlingale Properties, right? And we supported that because we see it's valuable to the city. And this is the same. It's valuable to the city, not just as a service, but also it saves taxpayer money. We pay less to animal services by using this -- by allowing this program to exist. I've been involved as a donor, as a adopt -- I've adopted, I've fostered, and I've been to the low-cost clinic. It's a great program. I think it's important that we support it, and I hear what you're saying, Mayor, but I think this is a very unique case, and it doesn't really fit in with the rest of nonprofits in Cape Coral. We do this for businesses. We waive permit fees for businesses if we think it's a promising business. So I think it's important to do the same thing here. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know that I was too far off from where you were, and Joanne had -- and I had this conversation before the meeting started, you know, do we want to get into the nonprofit business? But then I realized you have to weigh community impact, community need, and what they're really doing. You know, we're saving animals with this shelter here. You know, we don't have to pay those fees to the shelter across the river anymore, so they are saving the city money by what they're doing, and I don't mind keeping that door open. I think each case is assessed for that impact, for that need, for the wants, and I think that's how we have to look at it. In terms of what they've done the last, what, seven years, and the animals they've saved, the pets they've given to people for happier homes, what they're doing with camps to help to help our youth better their lives and have a better understanding of the animal population far outweighs -- far outweighs these fees. But as you mentioned, we did have the money available a long time ago, but I think we're in a position now, as our city grows, that we assess each of these nonprofits individually if somebody comes for another ask, and I don't think they're banging down our door for money. But in this particular case, I think the unique aspect of what they deliver year in and year out makes a huge difference to our community, and I will support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I could certainly respect and appreciate the discussion point that you brought forward with regards to kind of opening the door. I think I'm comfortable personally along the same light as Councilman Kozin and Mr. Hayden with regards to being comfortable differentiating this one a little bit for a couple of different reasons, right? So you talk about the ROI, although that's not the nature of the business in the nonprofit world, but as explained, you know, we do get a little bit of a financial benefit among the humanitarian and other aspects involved with regards to the money saved from the animal shelter or going over the bridge, et cetera. But also the fact that we're in a position that was maybe initiated several years ago as far as a partnership, so to speak, with the land that the property sits on, and so this is just a furtherance of something that had already been done by previous council. So for those particular reasons, I think I'm comfortable splitting those hairs, so to speak, with regards to anyone else that might come forward. I'm also comfortable if they do come forward with weighing the cost and benefits, so to speak, of each respective NPOs they come up before us. I'm not too particularly concerned with, you know, telling someone no if that's not something that we can collectively agree on. And so for that reason, I will be supporting it as well, but I do appreciate the discussion and think it was worth mentioning and needed to be had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, thank you. I think the timing on this expansion is also pretty good considering with all the investment we put in with the racket facility and the expansion of sunsplash as well as the new building that we're doing at the youth center for the skate park. So timing on this, I think, is also important, and I wish the animal shelter luck in getting the funding they need to build this building. But I think that area of the city is going to see quite a big change, and for them to be able to do this alongside with some of the city-initiated stuff that we have, I think it's great for the community, and I am supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I believe it adds great value to our community, and it is a service that all families in this city can use, and they're doing a great job, and I think it's a worthwhile investment, and I will be voting for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, does that give you the direction you're looking for?
It does, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming, and we look forward to providing that additional service to our community.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the Yacht Club Master Plan Architectural and Floor Plan update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn this presentation over to James Pankin and with Kim Lee Horn. So at the last time we met, we made some slight modifications to the site plan, sorry, made some slight modifications to the site plan. We are going to just kind of go through those with you this morning and then seek some input from you all on some architectural features, on how we would like to design the main community center and any associated buildings that are around the community center. My goal for today is to get a consensus from you all so that we can begin work actually going out to the community, letting them know what the final decision was that was made on the site plan, as well as the architectural elements of the building and the programming in the building. As we get into the building design, many months down the road, we'll have the opportunity to, you know, look at, you know, is there a way to make the building more efficient or, you know, so don't look at the interior that's going to be put forward today. It's a concept, just like we did with anything else, and as we start designing, things may come up that we might want to shift and be nimble in. But I do want to get a consensus today on the building architecture so we can go to the community, let everybody know what the vision is for the plan, and then actually send the design team to work designing it so we can move it towards the next step, which is getting our construction manager to begin constructing it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or I'm sorry, good morning still.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Again, for the record, James Pankin and with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. As Mike said, we want to give you an update on a couple of site plan modifications that we've made and the reason behind those modifications, and then John Bryant with me from Sweet Sparkman Architects will walk you through the architectural concepts. This is the plan that we last presented to you on January 17. We talked about the pool, the community center, the restaurant, all of the features that you see within the plan there. As we dove into the building that was part of this plan, we had a first-floor floor plan that you saw over here and then a second floor plan. As Mike said... As Mike said, there'll be a lot of development on the actual kind of final layout. These, these studies were programmatic and to kind of get use adjacencies ironed out a little bit and rough square footages. We've had some conversations with city staff as well on those uses and made some modifications based on that. One of the things that came up after this floor plan was presented was the area down here on the first floor in this wing of the building. In this version that you saw, we had anticipated that area being utilized for some loading and staging and bringing stuff in and out of the building to help the functions that occur within the building. After our meeting, one of the discussions that we had with city, after our meeting with, with you in January, one of the discussions that we had with city staff during our, some of our team meetings was the opportunities to maybe program that portion of the building a little more and have more functional space within that lower level of the building. So we did some plans and studies that had restrooms, as well as pump equipment for the pool in that location. But then what we really, I think, came to the realization as a team was that even beyond having restrooms in the pump building within there, that there's really a higher and better use within that area of the building that provides more civic use and more community use. So that led us to the floor plan that you, that you see in this concept. Again, this is the first floor plan of a revised center. So in this scenario, we have additional meeting space and storage, as well as a small amount of loading and receiving on the, on the side of the building here, but more functional space that is directly related to the pool deck and the water views and everything that we're trying to accomplish with this plan. So we would recommend maybe considering something along these lines, just to get that higher and better use on that ground floor of the building. The second stor-, uh, floor of this building in the revised plan here is largely the same in terms of its use, some minor modifications. The ballroom has been shifted out to be above that area, but we still have the large open area over here looking over the multipurpose room on the first floor. But again, that gives us a really nice elevated view over the pool deck and over the water and kind of capturing that, those scenic views. So as we talk about the, the changes here on the first floor, again, not having restroom and pump equipment within that lower level of the, of the building drove us to kind of repositioning some of those elements on the site. And those are highlighted in the yellow circles that you see here. So what we've done was located restroom for the pool deck in a combined building with the restroom for the beach area. The way we envision that is that you've got kind of a split level. And so you have controlled access from the pool deck side where they would be able to enter from the pool deck, but the beach restroom users would still have a, they would need a card or something to get through the gate to get into the pool deck. So from a managing and operation standpoint, you still have controlled access within the pool deck, but we've combined that structure with separate entries. That's also allowed us to do some things like combine some of the plumbing and some of the other infrastructure that, you know, is required to make the restroom operate. So this building here, number 20, grew in size a little bit. We envision on the pool deck level that in addition, in addition to the restrooms, we also had showers as well as changing facilities within there. So that really functions from a pool deck standpoint. And then again, on the, on the other entry from the beach side, it would be restrooms, restrooms only in that location. The building over here that you see with number 29, we're envisioning that to be the pump building. A pool and features of this size requires a lot of pump equipment, and so we're proposing that that would go in that location. And then in the corner of that building, we're proposing a light, small lifeguard area that would allow for, you know, lifeguard table if they needed to lay somebody or out and, and service them that way, or, and as well as a small, maybe lifeguard administration office. Having it in that location also allows us to kind of control the entry to the pool between that lifeguard building as well as the community center. So you'd have a controlled access gate there with some lifeguard support services, but then the restrooms for the pool would be where I mentioned earlier. So that leaves us with the plan that we see here today. Again, just wanted to point out those two small minor modifications, that this building grew in size a little bit, and then we added the smaller pump support building in this location. With that, I'm going to turn it over to John to talk through the design options from an architectural standpoint. We've got three options to share with you. Each of those options has some inspiration images, proposed concept, and then some precedent imagery that kind of follows up with that.
Great, thank you, James. One other thing I'll point out before I start talking about the design options, as we worked on the floor plan of the new community center, one of the things that did really inspire the floor plan was maintaining that experience of the original yacht club where you come into an entry foyer and that grand multipurpose hall that will accommodate public uses is directly off that foyer. So part of that, I just wanted to point that out, is the thinking of the experience and the, the significance to kind of Cape Coral community, that sequence of events. When you come into the building, you have that large multipurpose hall. So just kind of setting the stage for that. But I'm going to show three options, and you can think of these three options as kind of casting a wide net. Really, we're looking for the general feel and the vibe that, that we want to move to. The, the building designs that you're going to see, they are conceptual, they're based on the floor plan, the layout, but they're going to evolve over the course of the months, months ahead. So it's really about what is the feeling, what's the general kind of style that we want this whole development to move forward with. So design option one is really informed by the design work that we had done prior to Hurricane Ian, sort of a coastal vernacular, the two images there, that's the harbor master building, the parking garage. These also are similar to some of the park buildings we're doing at Lake Kennedy Park, Yellow Fever Creek. So it's sort of informed by the current architectural work that's being done. And the view we'll show here, so this is a concept view of the new community center. You'll see it carries that kind of coastal vernacular feel we're looking at. It's a two-story building. So one other thing I'll point out, when we think about the existing yacht club building, the scale of these two buildings are very different. The yacht, the existing yacht club does have a really high space. We're actually looking at a two-story building, it's a larger footprint. So, you know, as you think about the, the look and the feel of the building, the newer building is going to be much larger. So this is more of a coastal vernacular, kind of Key West, deep overhangs, articulation and ornamentation, exposed rafter tails. So again, a very accommodating, welcoming feel, kind of a coastal vernacular feel. But, you know, different than the existing yacht club building. For, for each of these options, what we'll be showing is sort of some inspiration images and then the concept image of the building itself, and then a few additional precedent images that might give you an idea of as the building design evolves, sort of the type and the feel of those spaces. So again, these images just show sort of a coastal vernacular feel, nice kind of deep overhangs, sort of ornamental type railings, again, in line with some of the design work that we had previously done out at the yacht club. So option two really looks more closely at being informed by the existing yacht club building. Now, this is, I think, an exciting option, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of design material to work with. They are different buildings. Again, the existing yacht club, it's about a 10,000 square foot building. We're now looking at more of a 40,000 to 50,000 square foot building. So different massing. And you also want to be careful, you don't want to just recreate the design of an existing building in a new building. That can often diminish the value of the original design. So I think, well, again, all, the inspiration images are shown there. So this is a concept image. This would be taken on kind of the beach side, looking over the pool towards the new building. So this option would likely have more of a, kind of a stone base, a little bit more of a mid-century feel to it, probably some exposed heavy timber, similar to kind of the glue lamps that are in the existing building. And, yeah, so again, there, there's certainly opportunity to kind of further develop this option to, you know, have even more of the existing yacht club feel, but a different, you know, a different vibe, a different feel than, than option one. I think these, these precedent inspiration images give you a little bit more of the idea of the feel of that. You know, if you think back to the existing yacht club, it's got that nice fieldstone base, it's got some of the exposed wood details. It's, again, this is a larger building, so often this type of language works very well in smaller facilities, but we could certainly bring some elements of this into the new design of the yacht club. And lastly, design option three, just to kind of cast that wide net, looks at a much more contemporary language. So earlier on in the original yacht club process, we had actually looked at some more contemporary designs for the parking garage, for the harbor master building. You know, as architects, we really love these, these designs, and I think there is an opportunity to think of doing something more contemporary for the new community center complex. But so these were, that top images was an early concept for the parking garage, bottom right was the harbor master building. So again, very different concept here in option three, sort of a similar massing, where we like the idea of a tower element that you would see as you kind of approach the building. All three options have that, really expressing the grand double-height space of the multipurpose hall and still having kind of generous balconies and overhangs, but in a more contemporary language. And just a couple precedent images that show you, you know, even with kind of a, that more contemporary language, you can still have warmth incorporating some wood elements, some stone elements. These images kind of give you an idea of the, the feel and the vibe you may get with, with this option. So that's, that's the overview of the three options.
Thank you, John. So just kind of moving forward from a timeline standpoint, we do have our public meeting scheduled for April 2nd, and we have another, a follow-up scheduled for May 7th. In the background, as, as you've seen some of these items, we're working on our updated 3D model of the site, like you saw with the initial concept. So we would anticipate presenting some of those views at the April 2nd meeting. We'd love to get your input on the architectural style so that we could kind of incorporate that into some of the model views as well. So that just kind of reinforces the ask of what we're here for today and then kind of gives you a timeline for us moving forward as well.
So basically, what you're asking is for each council member to choose option one, two, or three?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't we start at Councilmember Cosden and just go down the line?
Can I say just a few words?
Sure.
Okay. I like design, too. I think it's important that we stick to what we talked about. I don't think we made a promise, but I think we talked about incorporating the old building in this design. I'm a little disappointed it doesn't, it really just looks kind of like identical to number one with a few, you know, little changes. I wish we could have done more, but I know it's hard with a two-story building to make it look the same as a very unique one-story building. So to summarize that, design two.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions, but I can, I can say right off the bat, definitely not number three. But in that number two, when you talked about the heavy timber use and so, you know, some potential beam aesthetics, would we be using, would we be using wood or would we, would we be using some type of a synthetic, like a synergy cypress or something where the maintenance of those wood components of the building would not require as much as, as the wood and the deterioration that we saw in real wood and the other, in the laminated wood?
Yes, correct. Certainly anything that would be exposed to the exterior would be a composite wood of, of some kind. I think we, we could, depending on how the design of the interior features evolve, it could be, you know, steel and with, with a wood cladding on it, but we wouldn't, anything that would be exterior would be composite. And, you know, likely any wood on the interior would be more decorative wood, like decorative trim. So yes, I think we would want to avoid any structural wood that could be compromised.
Okay, well, thank you. With, with that being said, I realize there could be a whole myriad of these, so thank you for narrowing it down to the three that you have. I would say of the three, and, you know, in concurrence with Councilmember Cosden, I think number two certainly brings some of the elements of, of the old building in with those wood features, but I definitely would not want to have to deal, would not want the city to have to deal with the type of maintenance required in, in natural wood products. So as long as we can bring that aesthetic and keep the maintenance down, number two would be my choice.
Councilmember Shepard.
Number one.
Option one for me, I think it's the most aesthetically pleasing out of the three for me personally. I do know that the parking garage that is depicted in this option is very similar, especially with some of the architectural features and the color of some previous renderings that were provided. So for me, it's option one.
Yeah, well, option one for myself as well, you know, for a couple of different reasons. One of them is I just appreciate the aesthetic of the old Key West. I think we also should keep in mind that we just had a discussion, I believe, at the CRA meeting with regards to kind of keeping the coastal theme down in that particular area, and I think we utilized the, the yacht club plans as a reference for that. But just, just for a couple of different reasons. I know number two, technically, if you talk about the, the wood incorporations, you maybe could try to tie something into the existing, but I mean, as you said, sort of that Frank Lloyd Wright aesthetic doesn't necessarily lend itself to a larger structure. And, and, you know, some of the renderings look more like a lakeside lodge than, than something that you'd see down here in what would be reminiscent of Old Florida. So it's one for me. Thank you.
I have to agree with Councilmember Steinke, definitely a no on three, 100% out of the gate there. I don't see a whole lot of differences between one and two, so I'd be happy with either one. But me personally, I like, I like the look of two and, and where that's going to take us. I know we're trying to keep everything consistent with what we've been doing, which would be with one, but I think the yacht club needs to be unique in its own way, but also be consistent. So I think option two does give, give that its, its own little flair. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
All right, it's going to come right down to the wire because we're three to three right now, so I'm going to go with option one. But I did have one question, and I know we're not necessarily talking about the inside of the building. The ballroom at 5825 square feet is a little bit less than half the size of the ballroom at the Wesson, which is 12,260, and that'll seat about 600. I'm worried about, which makes the new ballroom seat not too much more than what the old ballroom did, about 250 or so, 300. So I am concerned a little bit about the size and if there's a way to be able, if there are options available, to maybe expand the sides of that ballroom, because we, we don't have many facilities in the Cape other than the Wesson that will hold more than 250 people, and we have a lot of big events here, and we like to bring bigger events into the city. So just as you start to look at the interior, that would be the only thing, but I, I like the looks, the feel, the aesthetics of, of option one. Thanks.
Thank you. Quick, quick, I don't know if this is even possible to answer, but with, based on the two, one and two design, they, they are not that different. I, I agree with that as well. But from a cost perspective, can you, can you tell us, would there be any significant cost difference between those two designs, one and two?
That's a good question. I, I would say at this point, probably not. They're, they're probably, either one could be designed within a similar construction cost. I don't think there's anything inherently, yeah. I, I mean, maybe option one is a little more conventional where option two is probably going to, you know, as it's trying to recreate a little more of the existing yacht club feel, it may have some longer spans of, you know, structure, but probably, I would say they're similar, you know, with possibly option two being, you know, a little more expensive, maybe.
Thank you for that definitive answer.
Yeah.
You know, given that, I, I'd go with option one. I think they aren't that different, but just from a cost perspective, if there is any difference in price that would bring it down, I would go with the lesser option, which you're telling me is basically one. Maybe not significant numbers, but I'm going to go with option one.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you. I forgot to ask, I was going to ask the same thing, actually. Is there a price differential between these three? Well, not these three, none of us like three. That thing is hideous, so just one and two. What is the price tag that we're expecting? Mr. City Manager.
I don't have an estimate at this time. As we, as we get closer into, we can start working out some estimates per square foot based on the materials that are, that are selected, the finishes, the glazing, how much glazing goes into there. Do you have, do you have any rough order magnitude at this point?
No, we've not prepared that yet.
We, we haven't discussed that at this point. It'll, it'll really come into how much of certain materials are needed and, and construction methods.
When will we know? When will we have that information?
So normally, that's something that we prepare as we're going through engineering design at roughly 30% construction documents. We can work with the city as we're going to be refining the, the floor plan over the next couple of weeks.
couple of weeks and really getting the spaces kind of dialed in. We can start to assign some broader square foot budget numbers that'll help us stay in line with the initial expectation, but typically around 30% is when we'll have that.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work. I appreciate what you've done here on all three designs. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, the direction that you're looking for today is the direction where the firm that we've hired to do the design will start moving forward. I know we have two public meetings coming up that was mentioned earlier. I guess after that public comment in those two meetings, will we be coming back and having a further discussion on what was disseminated amongst the public comment and bring that back before council?
Is there another presentation planned for council to digest what we got in the public input in the schedule?
We had talked about coming back at an additional COW in, I think, was it May 13?
The first one in May, right?
Yes. So we would, yes, we would intend to summarize any input that we received.
Okay. Now, will these three options be presented at the public input or the option here that a majority of council is moving forward with? Is that the plan that we will be presenting?
We intend on, as James explained earlier, they're working on some 3D rendering so people can kind of see what different viewpoints will be standing at different locations in the park. With what I've got this morning, I have two for five definitive number ones, which in itself is a majority or consensus. And I did have one council member who said they had a preference for one but could work with number one as well. So, you know, five hard and six all in. So that's a pretty good consensus for me. So we'll begin with Kim Lee Horn and Sweet Sparkman putting those renderings together. Those will be brought out to the community to basically let them know what was decided for the park, go over the changes that were made to the site plan, and then when we come back in a COW, we do need to amend the contract for the actual design element for the structure. So the existing contract that we have is for the site, and then since the hurricane that we've discussed, we now need to basically, new ballroom, new community center, the pool pump house, the lifeguard station, bringing in the outdoor restrooms onto the restroom that was already there. We will need to amend the contract for these additional vertical elements. So that's what we intend to bring back is input and go over briefly what that contract is in a COW. If everything is good there, we'll put it on the next agenda item for approval. And the idea that we, I think we discussed was either right before we go on hiatus, you all are approving that so they can get to work, or we intro it and then right after you get back and then they're going to work in July. That's kind of the layout of what we're planning.
I know my preference would be hopefully, you know, before we go on hiatus so we don't have that month lag in between, but of course, it's only if we're ready. I mean, so we'll find out as we get.
Depends on that.
Exactly. Councilmember Corey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Mizurkowitz's comments and give some, my perspective at least on that with regard to the sunset being impeded for some residents adjacent to this area. I think the negative impact of not enough parking would be more significant. That's my reason for wanting more parking in the structure itself. I do think that would detract more for the neighbors by not having enough parking than the sunset issue. So just wanted to acknowledge your comment and that it was considered, at least by me. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Yep, thank you. I don't think that the existing pier really has much of a contingency on what we're doing here, I would think. So I know it's important to the citizens to get that pier up and open as quickly as possible. None of this work that we're doing now should interfere with that being accessible as soon as possible, or would it?
We don't, there's nothing in the Army Corps permit on the, we're not expanding the pier and it's, it was as is, right?
Yes, and we are concluding, we should have the final report of the second phase of the investigation that we did on the piles at the end of this month. So from a structural standpoint, if you recall, the piles were jacketed, and so we did some destructive testing where we removed that so that we could actually inspect the concrete pile and the steel within that, and we'll be providing those recommendations in the summary of that report at the end of this month. But technically, what we had talked about was doing the pier reconstruction and opening as part of the marine package, which we're anticipating would be ahead of the rest of the site design. So to answer your question, the pier renovations don't necessarily hinge on the final site design that we just talked about this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Just a real quick question on the comment you made regarding the pier because I know the city manager will tell you, I ask him every week about the pier, and he's probably tired of me asking him every week about that pier. And the last bit of information he gave me was that report would be available in two weeks, and that would have been end of this week. So now you're telling me another two, two and a half weeks, today is only the 13th, before that report is available. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying the end of this month, yeah. I'm sorry if we gave a different timeline to Mike, but we're looking at having it at the end of this month, yeah.
And that evaluation has already been done in order, correct?
We've done the water inspections and all the physical work. We're just working on preparing the reports and getting that finalized today.
Okay. All right. So hopefully we'll have that information.
Yes.
You know, I think one of the things where we've been waiting for months now is to try to find out if the structure that is there now, if it's been compromised in any way, because if it has not, we don't have to go through the Army Corps process for a permit. So that should be something that we can fast-track and try to get going sooner rather than later as far as the repairs. So, you know, that's why I've been asking for that each week, you know, so we can get that moving forward. So hopefully we can get that report sooner rather than later. Just one other quick question. Could you show the site plan again real quick? One thing I forgot to ask. Is there any particular reason why the additional pier that we are putting in is in that particular shape? Have we, in our, do we, have we applied through the Army Corps for this particular pier? Is that a part of our permit or is this something that we still have to do?
Yes, that would be a separate permit through the Corps to do that additional pier. The shape was kind of driven by some of the, just to give a brief overview, some of the site geometry and angles. You can see the angle generally lines up with kind of what we're doing with the buildings from that standpoint, and really all, a lot of that is oriented towards kind of prime sunset views. And then on this side, you've got some really nice sunrise views. So that's kind of how we came up with the shape there. The size of it, we're looking for some depth charts and some information on the channels that exist there because there's a residence here and I believe their primary boat access comes from this way and then over, kind of in front of this pier into their area. So we don't want to impede on that channel, so we're trying to make sure that we have that correct base information prior to finalizing that design.
In my understanding, we're putting some shade structures on that, if I recall when I read through the packet.
Yeah, the intent was that we would have some shade structures out on the end of that.
Yeah, unless it's impeding the navigational channel there. For me personally, you know, if that pier was like rectangular in shape at the end, that's going to provide more persons to be able to go out there. So for me, the shape looks a little irregular. If there's a reason for it, I understand. If it's going to block the channel for, in that area, I, you know, I understand that as well. If that's the case, then what I would suggest is backing the pier up closer to land and try to have the pier as big as possible out there. Just, I think, you know, with sunset and sunrise views there, I think that's going to be utilized quite frequently. So the more people that we can get out there, I think would be for the better. So that was my only comment I had on the site plan. The rest of it looks great. I appreciate you, I know we've had this discussion many, many times and we've changed, you know, the site plan, tweaked it here and there, so I just wanted to thank you for your patience. You know, this particular project's probably going to be a once-in-a-lifetime for us, so we want to make sure we get it right. So we appreciate your patience through the process.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Mr. City Manager, anything else you need from us on this particular project?
No, thank you.
Okay. With that being said, item six is...
Item five.
I'm sorry. Item five is roundtable discussions. Any roundtable discussions council has? Okay, not seeing anything. We'll move on to item six, time, place, future meetings. We have the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, March 20th, 2024, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.